I would like to call to order the February 3rd, 2020, Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome, everybody. You have a copy of the agenda for tonight's business before you. Do I hear a motion that we approve or adjust the agenda? I'm assuming that was for approval. Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we move to discussion items. First up, from Infrastructure and Asset Management, courthouse expansion project update, Mr. Billifer, and I think he has lots of supporting actors in the crowd.
This is Jason Harris with Messer Construction Projects. So he's put together this presentation that'll go through the logistics of the different GMPs and kind of give you some aerials to show you the fencing and the kind of obstructions that'll be to downtown and go through some key dates. Before we get to that, I kind of wanted to give you an internal update in terms of our different meeting with different stakeholders in the process to convey all this information because we can talk about GMP 1, which is the enabling package, but that's getting the current 1975 courthouse ready to be able to accept all the improvements. And the big two items in that GMP 1 are building an elevator shaft in an existing courthouse while it still continues to operate as a courthouse. The other portion is creating a party wall or a separating wall between the courthouse annex and the courthouse so that we can move forward with the demolition. So we have met extensively with the executive leadership staff in the courthouse and all the way down to the employee level to do all the moving around of folks that we have to do to be able to do this. So we will be affecting court reporters, judges, adult probation, juvenile probation, teen court and conflict resolution, as well as the district attorneys and the clerk of courts. So quite frankly, every single group in there except about one. So we have moved on with a lot of that. We've actually moved some entities out of the courthouse and moved other groups into their space to kind of make this all work where we can get in there and do this work. So we've been doing that for probably the last seven months, moving all these people around. We've moved guardian ad litem and juvenile probation are completely out of the building currently. And then we're backfilling in into their areas with other folks that we can free up the space for Jason and Messer to come in and build this elevator shaft. We've kind of broken GMP 1 up into two big phases to us. And the first phase is building the elevator shaft, and the second phase is actually building this party wall in between the two buildings. And basically, that will allow us to do that demolition that you will see. And they're going to happen at two different times. So Jason's going to kind of go through that. If you have any questions, you can go and ask me. But we have met with every department that will be affected, one-on-one, and then we have met with their leadership staff as of late as last Thursday. Both Jason and I went over and gave this exact presentation to them. No pressure.
Well, thanks, everyone, for having us here this evening. Here's the rendering of what we will be building and what we'll all be excited to see here in a couple of years from now. But with that, we'll get started into what GMP 1 looks like. So goals really here is just to bring everyone up to speed on really what Kyle's already talked about some here and what we'll be doing as we roll into the first phase of the work and what the impacts will be on the surrounding folks there in the facility. I listed some folks here with us. So obviously, I'm Jason Harris, Chris Mountowski, who's our OVP, sitting back in the back here along with Steve Wise from Lyles Construction. So preliminary timeline for the project, we have bid pack 1 is really what we're here to focus on more than anything, but to give an overview of the rest of it, we'll be mobilizing here in just a few weeks here at the end of February, and then that work will really carry us through November timeframe of this year. And that's all the enabling work that will allow us to start the new courthouse construction, which is bid package 2. So we start that in November of this year, and that'll go for a couple of years before we turn it over to you all. And then bid package 3 is the follow-on work that'll happen in your existing courthouse now, starting in November and moving through February of '24.
One thing to point out is those timelines are preliminary. So some of those might shift one way or the other as we work through some of these parts of this project.
So here's a little bit of an overhead angled view of what exterior Phase 1 is going to look like. So as Kyle mentioned, most of our work in Phase 1 is in the existing courthouse. We're building a new elevator shaft and moving some utilities around, building the demising wall between the courthouse and the annex. And then also, on the outside of the building, what we're going to be doing at the same time is starting the abandonment of Means Avenue. So you can see the temporary construction fence there, some lot access routes, as well as the location of where the temporary generator is going to move, or your generator for the courthouse will move into a temporary location as part of this phase of work.
So that I know that you might get questions from the public, the closing of Means Avenue is slated for March 31st. And at that point, a lot of the questions that we had from courthouse staff is how will they enter their existing parking lot? So the parking lot that looks right out these windows. They will all come into that parking lot via Corbin and have to rotate around to get into the secure parking, so their lot will stay open until July 2020. But actual Means will shut down again on March 31st, 2020.
Question, Kyle. The bank that's there now, is that drive-through, is that still being used? And how is it going to be, obviously, going to be affected?
Mr. Marshall would like to comment on that.
Okay.
That drive-through is not being used. We've been working with the separate property owners, but Justin Mueller, who is the owner under an LLC, has access to Church Street. So they'll be accessing through the parking area that they own that runs on Church Street.
Repeat the date again, the parking lot will remain open until?
The parking lot will remain open preliminarily, correct, until July of 2020, and that is what's used for staff. And again, that parking lot remains open to the public after 5:45 each night and on the weekends. But again, it will only be accessible off Corbin. One thing to note is the very small area in front of the dumpster enclosure, which is right at the rear of the historic courthouse, that will be closing permanently. That will become Messer's lay-down area and staging area for their dumpsters and their equipment and their contractors, and that will be shutting down at the end of February. And I've made both the courthouse folks and the historic courthouse folks aware.
Perfect. Yeah, so that's a good segue here. You see some dates that we put up for Phase 1. So mobilize here at the end of the month. What Kyle was just talking about is the dumpster and lay-down setup, and you can kind of see that right behind the historic courthouse there with the gray dumpsters or conxes or whatever we're trying to show you there. The closure remains on 3:30. Fence and sign is set up to follow, and then the generator relocation tentatively targeted for June timeframe.
And obviously, as we go through this project, there'll be major implications to the courthouse staff because they enter either via the Corbin vestibule or the historic side vestibule. Okay, so they come in different locations than where the public comes in through the front. And as we flip-flop during this project, not at the same time, but each of those vestibules, those entrance vestibules, are going to be closed for certain times. So we're going to have to coordinate with staff to give them, you know, a seven-day heads-up of you won't be able to come in through this entrance vestibule, you'll have to come in through this entrance vestibule.
Yep. All right, so looking ahead a little bit here, we've got the start of the exterior Phase 2. So you can see our site fence has changed to adjust now encompassing both Means as well as the overall site for what will be the new courthouse. You can see some barricades out on the road on both Church and Corbin. We will be taking a lane for deliveries, and then you can see the tower crane that'll go there, kind of catty corner right behind the courthouse. So some important dates preliminarily there for Phase 2. We've got fence install. What we'll do is we'll be pulling down the temporary fence that we put up here as part of the first half of Phase 1 and putting up a driven fence that'll go in in August sometime. We'll start shoring piles sometime in mid-August and then demo the annex. So all the lead-on work we'll doing inside is critical path to get to the point where we can demo that annex off the back of the building. Do that work there late August through mid-October. Doing shoring and excavation for the basement and the foundations of the new building there from September through November. Setting up the tower crane right after the first of the year. That'll be there for about 13 months. And then fence and barricade removal sometime in October 2022 to allow us to wrap up the hardscapes and landscaping work with move-in set for January 2023. Moving into Phase 3 of the work, you can see now the courthouse in all of its beauty is done. We've got new fence set up there around the existing courthouse that y'all are working in today. We're taking up, again, a lane on Corbin for deliveries. We'll have some access there around the building indicated in yellow and our site fence there in orange. And some preliminary dates for Phase 3, setup of that fence and barricade there right about the same time the courthouse will be opening. We move it over January 2023. We've got a Bateman demo to take place, some facade and roof work that'll take a large majority of that overall timeframe. Interior rework taking place for about a nine-month period there, and then hardscapes and landscapes on the tail end with an owner move-in targeted February 2024. For Phase 1, we tried to put together some more detail on what the interior impacts are look like, and this is what Kyle and I have sat down with the teams over in the courthouse, the different groups that are in that facility to make sure they understand what we'll be doing. So in the bottom portion of your screen, you can see where we'll be putting the new elevator. That's what's indicated by that hash box. And the red areas are the areas that are going to be impacted by this work. So we'll be shutting down portions of the hallway. We'll be unfortunately having people vacate their spaces while we do this work, but all in an effort to keep things moving forward towards the new courthouse. So that was the basement. This is the first floor. Similar impact for the elevator with a few more people impacted there along the demising wall that separates the courthouse from the annex. Phase 2, or excuse me, Level 2, very similar impacts around the elevator again, and we still have to build the demising wall on the north side there with several of the parties working in those spaces being impacted. And Floor 3, because your annex doesn't extend more than two floors, won't be building a party wall there, so it's just the elevator work on the third floor. We wanted to leave plenty of time here for questions and answers, so. Anybody have anything they want to throw at us?
This is just the tip of the iceberg. This is just the construction part of it. We still have to work out the logistics of relocation of all the furniture from one spot to the other. You also have swing space, so as we build the new courthouse or GMP 2, obviously, when we go in to renovate the current courthouse, we have to move folks over into the new courthouse that won't stay there forever. So we have about four to five different logistics packages that the Infrastructure and Asset Management Group has to go through and manage.
Other questions? We've talked about this quite a lot, maybe?
It's coming.
I continue to hear complimentary comments from courthouse staff with the way that you guys have worked with them, and they are very appreciative of that, as are we.
The only thing I would tell the board is next month, I'm planning on coming up and giving another update to kind of let you know where we are on all the further designs because we still have design going on even though we're actually bidding out parts of the project. But I also want to bring some samples and kind of palettes together for you, both interior and exterior. We have met with staff, both from Infrastructure and Asset Management, courthouse security, and the actual users of the space, primarily about their interior facades. What type of material, what type of color palette do you want? And we'll be bringing those up hopefully in March for you all to look at and actually pass out pieces of what, samples of what those materials will look like so you can scratch them, bang them, or I assure you, if they've gotten this far, they've gone through a series of tests. I thought it would help if you all could kind of put your eyes on that and look at it and have an idea of what it's going to look like.
Do you have one quick question? Construction parking? Where are your guys going to park?
Parking deck.
Okay, so they'll utilize the deck?
Yep.
Okay. Well, and the other thing is just, it looked like the lay-down yard was somewhat small, but if Means is closed, I mean, there's no reason, I would assume you're going to spill out into Means anyway.
Yeah, once Phase 2 starts, really, during Phase 1, there's not a whole lot of work that will require that, but once we roll into Phase 2, yeah, you're exactly right. That tower crane can sweep and hit almost the tip of Means. So yeah, that's our intention.
His contractors will park over there, and if they hit any of the sprinklers, he's the guy to call since he was involved in building.
Well, maybe we need to, well, never mind, that's not going to go over well. I thought we might want to accelerate the discussion of charging the public to park there, and then they'd get the first bill, but that's all right. We'll leave it as it is for now.
I think if we do that, Chairman Morris might get some different calls about the cooperation with the courthouse staff since that's where I relocated him.
I think we'll leave that in Commissioner Cogger's hands, since that was his topic.
That, I'm glad there's at least some space to do it because I've certainly spent a lot of time on some sites where, I mean, the guys just can't, they have a hard time getting there, it starts their day late, it disrupts the schedule because parking's an issue, so that actually works out very well.
We've seen an average of peak at a noon time on a traffic court date, we get to about 230 to 240 in the deck, so we've got some capacity. And keep in mind, we'll be displacing in July, we're displacing 100-plus. Obviously, I would imagine a bulk of those folks will park over there. I can't say all of them, but that plus the contractors, plus if you kind of looked at the aerials that showed the different types of fencing, we're going to somewhat restrict folks parking in the Church Street parking lot to try to walk to the courthouse because there's not going to be a great path. You're going to have to walk through some of the city alleys to get there. So I think the parking deck is even going to become more populated, which is good because that's why we built it, yeah.
Yeah, I think all of our board has been involved in these conversations. It's, I couldn't quite in my head when we first started talking about the parking deck, put this all together as to how important it was going to be, but now it's pretty obvious. So we had good guidance in that regard. So it sounds like it's going to work well. Any other questions? Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you frequently.
Yeah, we'll be here. Thanks so much.
Okay, we move now to our Innovation and Technology Report, and we're happy to call on Debbie Brown.
Good afternoon. I have a couple of people joining me, Adam Cardnell from Esri and Joe Battenelli from our team that we rebranded Business and Location Innovative Services. While they're getting set up, I'll just give a quick PSA, kids of all ages, when you go snowboarding, make sure you wear a helmet and wrist guards. I have a visual aid here. I had on a helmet, I did not have on a wrist guard. So make sure that you wear your wrist guards. Tonight, we're going to be talking about our ARC GIS roadmap. We've worked with Esri to come up with a roadmap that aligns with our new strategic plan on how we can use the data and resources we already have and how we might add on to that data and resources to be able to achieve a lot of the strategic goals that the departments are going to be coming up with that match with the strategic plan. And I will turn it over to Adam.
Thanks very much, Debbie, and thanks very much for the opportunity to address the commission here. Again, my name is Adam Cardnell from Esri, and I'll be leading this presentation. And we'll be talking about how we're going to be working together with the county to deliver a smart community to the people of Cabarrus County. And we're going to do that through a geospatial strategy. And we recognize that smart, you know, has a lot of depth and breadth in its meaning, and it means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. But the purpose of this presentation is really to position location as being a critical element of government's work and a foundation element to achieve smart. I mean, everything that a government does has a location, right? And everywhere you look today, you hear the term "smart," and I don't know about you, but frankly, I'm tired of it, but that's the one that's in mode. And either smart communities, or smart cities, smart governments, smartphones, smart TVs, smart cars. But what we're here again to talk about is that location is key to all of this. So GIS or geographic information systems is the computer's way of utilizing location to be smart, and it's recognized as a foundational system. So any government agency that's trying to become smart, they're leveraging location in GIS. And there's many different challenges to becoming smart, and they can be driven by the citizens, they can be driven by infrastructure, by the environment, or by technology advancements. And GIS supports all aspects of that, and location plays a critical role. I mean, just everything that the county does has a location attached to it. So that's why it requires us utilizing that location with the GIS. And it starts with identifying priorities. And what does it mean to try to be smart? Well, it means trying to be a great place to live, work, and play. So you usually have some sort of initiatives or desires or vision to become a livable community, a sustainable community, resilient, well-run, healthy, safe, prosperous, these types of adjectives about a community. And I think these directly align to the priorities that are in your strategic plan, which are healthy and safe communities, culture and recreation, sustainable growth and development, a thriving economy, and transparent and accountable government. So these are the same things that we're trying to achieve. So what we've seen through our work with governments all across the globe, actually, is that there's four technology foundations that lead a government agency to becoming smart. The first one being planning and engineering. The next one is operational efficiencies. The third one is civic inclusion, connecting with the community. And the last one is providing insights-driven performance. And these four foundations are really what allows a community to tag themselves as smart and be smarter with their government. So let's look at each one of these. So the first one is planning and engineering. And right now, planning and engineering is really difficult. You've got to balance the needs of the people, the infrastructure, as well as the environment. But our approach really allows you to model the impacts of proposed development, you know, adjust it to shifting demographics and the economy, maybe also the climate change. So it prompts a community to learn and adapt through real-time data and deliver intelligent design of infrastructure, ultimately supporting urban mobility. So things change as long-term projects are built out, and so it's important to be able to have the data and be able to react to that and adjust your plan accordingly. So here are some examples of how other government agencies are using technology to do that. So there's the Sacramento Area Council of Governments in California using technology to identify the best locations to install bike parking. City and County of San Francisco, they're looking at the impacts of large-scale proposed development across the city and how it's going to affect the economy and the people that live there. City of Peachtree Corners, Georgia, they're looking at autonomous vehicle, they're building an autonomous vehicle test track, so they're looking at ways to analyze the environment to appropriately design that test track. Manatee County, Florida, they're very interested in sea level rise, so they're looking at how sea level rise is going to impact the community, particularly government infrastructure, and which ones they'll have to move. And they obviously don't want to invest into new infrastructure that's within an area that might be affected by that. Cobb County, Georgia, they're prioritizing their street repaving based on different inputs in real-time and in historic data. And then there's a city in South Korea that's looking at urban development in full 3D environment. And then some of the technologies that are used in a planning and engineering portion of this are desktop GIS, where we're doing spatial analytics, computer-aided design and building information management integration, image analysis, 3D analysis, and you can do collaborative design in 3D. You can design and manage and measure the impacts. And then on the website, you can do full 3D in a web environment as well as tell stories with maps. So a couple of other examples to pull out, this one's from Oshkosh, Wisconsin, and there will be URLs that attach to this. You can watch a short video about these stories, but they're pretty engaging. Oshkosh, Wisconsin, they were seeing some industrial businesses leave their community, so they used GIS in a 3D environment to develop a new plan called Imagine Oshkosh that allowed them to really sell the vision of the future of that town, and they were able to prevent some of those businesses from leaving as well as attracting new ones. Another example, this one from Boston, Massachusetts, they've got big spikes in population growth, so the city's needed to plan their existing city and the generations to come. They're able to do this holistically in a full 3D environment to look at existing buildings, existing zoning, and then adjust the zoning and land use they need to absorb the additional population, increase densities where they need to, et cetera. The next of the four pillars here is the operational efficiency. You know, smart communities are those that deliver unparalleled service to their constituents. You want to do it in a smart way and be more efficient. And these technologies can really allow you to be very much more efficient in an easy manner. So some of the examples here, Palm Beach County, Florida, on their mosquito inspections, they've got digital devices in the field. They're able to log when a trap traps a mosquito and the location of that, and then instantly update the system so that they know where to spray and when to spray, et cetera. They can also get routed on the spraying routes to make sure they're most efficient using gas. Johns Creek, Georgia, they've got an Alexa skill that allows them to connect the Alexa smart speaker with their open data so that if you're a Johns Creek resident and you own an Amazon Alexa, you can ask it questions and it will come back and tell you what day is your trash pickup or when's the next city council meeting. Iowa DOT, they're using the technology to look at bridge conditions, to analyze exactly which bridges are failing, and to prioritize their, bringing them up to code. St. John's County, Florida, they're looking at asset maintenance in this and analyzing the data, be able to proactively replace assets before they fail, and they're seeing a big savings there rather than replacing things that weren't ready yet. Seminole Tribe of Florida, they're using drones to fly around large objects that need to be inspected. So in this instance, we're looking at a large water tank. It used to take a big crew and a lot of special equipment to inspect that. Now they can simply fly a drone around it and then inspect it from the imagery that the drone delivers. So some of the applications that are used for this, a lot of applications for the field that allow people to capture the data, there's coordination from a dispatcher, you can navigate there, collect the data, and then you can monitor all of it back in the office from a live dashboard. So this really allows your folks in the field to be much more safer and much more efficient in what they do and provide better customer service because you can better estimate when you'll be visiting a customer with this kind of information available to you. And we have a whole bunch of configurable solution templates that allow you to deploy the software very quickly without having to write any code. They're off-the-shelf, and you plug your data in and configure them, and then off you go. So a great example of this is the Rose Parade in Pasadena, California, attached to the famous Rose Bowl. They get about 700,000 people in attendance at that. It's a very large security and logistical event. They use GIS to help them monitor the weather conditions, improve the mobile workflows, leverage live dashboards, and they do collaboration across multiple agencies. You also saw this, you didn't see this, but yesterday at the Super Bowl, behind the scenes, the same technology was used across the board in the entire couple of weeks leading up to the Super Bowl down in Miami Gardens. The third of these is insights-driven performance, and this is where we're really trying to use the data and analyze the data to provide actionable insights so that we can make better decisions and be more proactive and smarter in what we do. So some of the examples of this, in Cobb County, Georgia, they do traffic management using artificial intelligence. They do this every time there's a Braves game in the stadium there in Cobb County, Georgia. They've got cameras around, and they can recognize the pedestrians, and they can, on the fly, in real-time, change the traffic signal so that the pedestrians are able to get in and out of the game as quickly as possible. Tempe, Arizona, they're using some visualization and dashboarding applications that allow the public to look at the data revolving around the opioid epidemic there. It allows anyone to really understand the problem and how it's affecting them in their neighborhoods and how they can help resolve it. Baton Rouge, Louisiana, they're looking at live, real-time crime analysis, enable them to react on the fly and see trends before they get larger. Coral Gables, Florida, the lower left there, they have a fully engaged community intelligence crime center as well. And then Iowa DOT does a real-time monitoring of all their snow operations. So they've got real-time data feeds from the plows. They know when the plow is up or when it's down or when it's dropping brine, et cetera, and they can constantly make decisions on where best to put their resources. Some of the technology again behind this is, again, web GIS, particularly with dashboards and some more of those configurable solutions. Real-time is big in this instance because you want to make decisions based on the best data, so if you can plug into real-time data, it gives you the most accurate way to make a decision. So if you've got sensor networks or the Internet of Things or automatic vehicle locations, whether you're tracking and monitoring, you can see that here. And this allows, we've got some very easy-to-use web-based data exploration tools that can really turn anybody into a data analyst using just a web browser and be able to visualize the data in many different ways. And then artificial intelligence and machine learning allow you to really distill through large data sets and make predictions and identify features and trends, et cetera. So a good example here is Cobb County, Georgia, again, where I talked about the mobility related to the Braves game. This is where they're using the artificial intelligence to recognize the crowd movement and size and appropriately adjust the traffic crossings, et cetera. et cetera. So the last of the four is civic inclusion. And this is where, you know, smart communities, they push aside politics and try to use data and analytics to make decisions. Some of the examples here, Sonoma County, California, looking at fire debris cleanup status. Hillsborough County, Florida, looking at their capital improvement plan and expenditures, making sure that it's equitably spent and spread through, for all citizens across the county. Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, they're looking at a stress index that shows where their citizens are experiencing stress more than others, so that they could appropriately provide resources. Grand Rapids, Michigan, is looking at housing choices for all. Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority, they're looking at ways to communicate with all parts of the community, bring them all up to speed. San Bernardino County is looking at addressing homelessness through this kind of technology. And then again, Cobb County, Georgia, enhancing the lives of their senior citizens and making sure they're providing them with the needs that they have. And the technology here is a community engagement hub that provides a community portal along with open data and performance reporting that allows for initiative-based engagement with the community, as well as with other agencies. More configurable solutions around those areas, community data, such as your open data site right now, but you can consume other data outside of the county. So such as population change data, provide infographics, some behavior and lifestyle data, et cetera, and more storytelling with maps. And a great example here is San Bernardino County. They're really attacking the homeless population here and solving that issue here with a full, broad-based, integrated technology here, where they've got a team that relocates homeless populations. And they were reacting to a flood that was happening. So they knew the flood was going to be happening. They were able to proactively get out there, find the homeless populations and move them before they were going to get endangered by the flood plane. So they're using mobile tools, they're using dashboards, lots of real-time information. So again, the idea here is that smart communities start with location. Everything the county does has a location. We're going to focus on these four areas, planning and engineering, operational efficiency, insights-driven performance, and civic inclusion. And the way we get started here is by first developing a strategy. We want to create a foundation, embrace the platform of the GIS, create an approach that defines the priorities and needs of the county, adopt the technology and assess the resources, and then go ahead and implement that. And we've already started that. So Esri worked with the county to do a GIS discovery workshop, where we talk to every department here at the county, figure out what their requirements are, so that we can then provide a roadmap and a plan to address those with the technology. And that's what we see here in the GIS discovery findings here. So we've got six different items here that were identified for findings here. Joe, did you want to talk about these?
Yeah. Just to touch on these, you see them up there, but I was reading through our mission statement and vision of the county with the new strategic plan. And these, like I was going to go through and just list what it hit for each one, but really, it's everything, not to overstate it. But as Adam mentioned, providing smart information out to the stakeholders and the public can improve the conversation with the community. We can promote the health and safe community if we provide that transparency that gains trust with the community. And our services, of course, all take place at locations, and what is around them matters. And if we're not looking at that, we're missing a big piece of the pie, as far as what is out there and what we need. And we can also work together with community partners so we can see data, like we only have right now, really what the county produces. But there's other data sets out there that community partners invest in and work with, that if we work together, we could have a better picture of what's going on in the county. This is where we're working towards. And sustainable growth and development, it happens when we all work together. And that's really what the GIS, which we're kind of growing out of that, just that term GIS, but what that platform of location intelligence really provides.
Yeah. Yeah. So the discovery findings talked about focusing on a 3D-based map, engaging the community with the hub, doing some more storytelling with maps, having the Comp Sales Finder application, doing some drive-time predictions using some artificial intelligence for the EMS, and then implementing a product called our GIS indoors. And what that does is that allows you to take your mapping indoors. So a good place to start would be your new courthouse, so that we could actually see it in full 3D capabilities and be able to manage that space and assets, as well as building management in one single system, so that it can help people find their way through the courthouse. It can help your operations for safety and security, emergency management, asset management, part of your portfolio management of real estate, and then also your data management with your floor plan integration, et cetera. Another big focus area is health and human services, whether it be homelessness, vector-borne diseases, community health assessments, et cetera. Again, all of this happens in a place, in a location, and we can really much better provide health and human services by utilizing the power of location. Do you want to go through these?
Okay, cool. Which, oh, here. So just to give you kind of a state of where we are right now, we have many direct and indirect usage of the GIS. I just list some departments' tax, public safety, construction standards, and Board of Elections as a few. But I totaled it up, and that's about 500 total people conservatively, out of the 1,300 employees of Cabarrus County are using the GIS directly or indirectly. Now, as Debbie mentioned to me earlier, everybody works at a location. And so we're all using GIS in some manner. This meeting is here in the governmental center at 65 Church Street South. That matters. And so we're all using it. But more directly, you'll see it's about 40% of our employees are currently benefiting from the GIS. And we want to grow that so that we can be smarter. And that's not to mention that we also have other municipalities connected to our systems. So we also have, the City of Concord has at least 120 users that are connected directly into our GIS. There's a lot of benefit there. We don't, we provide all our data out to everybody, as you know, but they're connected directly and so they see everything. We have our open data site, which Adam mentioned. We have about a little over 150 different data sets. Some of those are GIS layers, some is information from the tax department that you download. We get a lot of requests about that. We also provide data to the state. So there's a North Carolina, state of North Carolina Seamless Parcels program, where they keep a whole, the whole parcel map for the whole state in one layer, and they provide that out. So hopefully, we don't get a ton of requests. But that's the hope. We also provide data for the census, boundaries, annexations, addresses. We also have, I want to put a plug out for one of our newer applications that's out there, is the public notification application. And this is where, we had it on our GIS Data Explorer site previously, where you could select some properties and be like, I want to do a mail-out to these properties, or I want to know who owns these properties. You could get that information from our website. Moving on. As you know, we launched the new GIS website last month, and we're still continually upgrading that. As of today, just two hours before this meeting, we added the 1995 imagery, which has been previously locked away for us internal users. But now we have it out there and we finished caching it, so it's out there for everyone to use. So that's another nice new benefit of this new site. We're also going to be working on, going forward, we're working on redundancy and optimization and stability. That is a big thing for us, and we understand how important the GIS is. And we want to make sure that site is available all the time. Excuse me. And just to give you a quick, over the last 30 days, 28% of our customers to the websites were on GIS-based websites for the county. The Map Cabarrus application was the top-visited site for the last 30 days, out of any site we have. People are using it. People are using it, and that is why we're supporting it.
All right. Yeah. So just to wrap it up, you know, every community can be a smart community. It starts with location. Esri is here to partner with the community and make you guys successful doing it.
Thank you, Adam and Joe.
Thank you.
As you can see, we're already using GIS heavily at the county, but we have room to grow. I mean, there's new products coming out. There's new thought processes on how to use location information. So we're very excited about Joe and our partnership with Esri, and we hope to continue to come up with new and innovative ways to help the county operate more efficiently. Questions?
Thank you very much. I wish I were smart enough to ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We move now to item 3.3 from Tax Administration, 2020 Revaluation Update. And we welcome David Thrift to the microphone.
Good evening. So I'm here this evening just to provide an update on our 2020 revaluation project. So as I've presented before, there are a number of stages to a revaluation project. Data collection is a piece that we always have ongoing. That's when our appraisers are in the field measuring properties, taking a look at what construction is taking place. So we continue to update and collect data. So we have a solid database of real estate in the county. Sales analysis is another big part of the project. We analyze every real estate transaction, every transfer of property. We distribute, collect questionnaires about that. We use tools like CoStar and MLS information to gather data. We talk to appraisers. We talk to real estate brokers. We talk to developers, just generally study the real estate market, try to understand what's taking place and what the reasoning behind transactions are. So we use that data and that sales analysis to develop our Schedule of Values. That is our appraisal guide. It's our standards and rules. It's the schedule that details all the calculations, all the models for our projections. This board adopted our schedule for the 2020 revale in October. Since that time, we've been working to do our neighborhood reviews. We use that schedule to have our appraisers look at each neighborhood individually, trying to determine, using that schedule, applying that schedule, applying those appraisal guides, establishing the market value for each property in the county as of January 1st, 2020. Once that review is complete, which it is now complete as of this week, our next step is to send notices to our property owners. We'll be sending out our revaluation notices. They'll be dated February 7th, so at the end of this week. Those will be going out to all property owners in the county. That starts and begins the next stage, which is our appeal process. And that's typically, in my opinion, one of our most important parts of this project. It's our opportunity to communicate with the taxpayers. It's an opportunity to address any concerns that, if we have anything that we've missed during that project, during that study. It's an ideal situation for us to just gather further information and complete the process. We have the most correct assessment possible. There's a couple of stages to the appeal process. The informal stage is the first stage. When we send those notices out, the notice form will have the new value on it. It will have the name and contact information for the appraiser that actually worked in that area. And the majority of the form is an opportunity to, if there are issues with the assessment, where you have details of information that we may not have had, that appeal form is part of the notice form that we send out. So the way to request an informal review is just to fill out those details. You can provide any other documentation and send that back to us, which will start an initial informal review. That's just an opportunity for the appraiser for that area to review the information that you've got, take a look at the sales and make sure that our assessment is correct. If there's need for adjustment, we can adjust during that period. Anything that can't be resolved under the informal review process, there's a more formal stage. We have a local board of equalization and review. It's a board of citizens who are appointed by this commission to, for the purpose of hearing those appeals. They sit, they hear appeals from the taxpayer. It's a more formal process. The taxpayer has an opportunity to present information. The county presents their information, and that board makes a determination of value from there. Beyond that is further levels of formality. There's the State Property Tax Commission, and then the Appeals Court and further court levels. But we certainly want to and desire and try to address as much as possible during that informal review stage. So the next month, the month and a half, will be kind of the most important part of this project as we go through it. So one of the ways we judge how we've done in this project is our statistical analysis of the sales ratio report. So when we talk about a sales ratio, we're talking about the assessed value of a property, which is our tax appraisal divided by the sales price. So for example, if you had a house that sold for $200,000, and we appraised that house at $199,000, that would create a sales ratio for that particular property of .995 or 99.5%. So our goal in this project, as you can see here with different types of property, is for each property that has a transaction in place to be as close to 100% of that value as possible. Certainly, in the process of mass appraisal, we're not going to be exactly at 100%, but our analysis shows kind of how close we are as an entire body to that, to those standards. So these standards that you see here are from the International Association of Assessing Officers. These are just the industry standard for what goals we're trying to hit. The three categories here are measure of central tendency. So that's your mean or average sales ratio, the median sales ratio. We're also looking for COD or coefficient of dispersion. So that's a statistical measure showing how wide the range of sales ratios is, very similar to how you might think of a standard deviation. It's our process of determining how close a grouping that analysis is. And the PRD is a price-related differential. So that's a tool that we use to calculate and look for, to make sure that there's not amount of progressivity or regressivity, which means regressivity being a situation in which lower-valued properties are assessed at a higher sales ratio than higher-valued properties, which would skew the equitability of the assessment. So anything outside of the range of 98 to 1.03 in that calculation indicates to us that there may be an issue, something that we need to go review. So for the group of sales from July 1st through December 31st, we've studied a lot of sales, but we've actually qualified just about 2,800 sales. So qualified sales are being the most determinant of market value. Those arms-length transactions, a sale between a willing seller and a willing buyer. Using those, our median and mean sales ratio are at 99% for, 99.3% for our median, 99% for our mean. Our coefficient of dispersion is about 3.89, and our PRD is 1.008. So all those certainly are very good statistics. That's where we should be at this point in the project. And this is just an example of those actually calculated and totaled up. So that is for our entire population of sales. We also look at individual types of properties, do this kind of analysis for each type of property that we have, so that we're making sure that within this project, we're assessing every property as close to 100% of market value as we can. So once again, just kind of a timeline of what to expect from this point. So we've spent, since the Schedule of Values was adopted, that final review and application, we finished that part of our project. At the end of this week, we'll At the end of this week, we'll be sending notices out to taxpayers. That will start our informal review and appeal process. Once again, just, I can't iterate enough, that is the most important part of our project, is the opportunity to communicate with our property owners, to educate them on our process if they have questions, and also to address any concerns and fix any errors that we may have come across. We do an appraisal on a little over 91,000 parcels as of one date, which is a significant project and certainly has room for error. So this is an opportunity for us to correct those, to have as accurate an assessment as possible for this revaluation. So that informal review period is, will be going through April. We'll try to respond to those reviews as quickly as possible. We will respond to all those reviews in writing with another notice of our decision. The Board of Equalization and Review typically begins their annual process towards the first part of April. At this point, we are projecting a schedule adjournment for the board to take appeals around May 8th. So that will be kind of the last day to appeal as part of this revaluation. So this week is kind of the week to expect notices to be out. We'll start the conversation, and we're looking forward to the reaction that we expect to get. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
So the February 14th to the April 30th, that's their, if they get their bills and they disagree, that's their time to make their appeal.
That's the point, when they get that notice, if they disagree to contact us. The form that we provide is just a one-page form. It's got the information about the property, the value itself. The majority of the form is kind of an appeal form. It's what we use as an informal appeal form. They can fill that form out, send it back to us, certainly attach any information they may have. We do have some great information on the county website that will be available under our revaluation page. As we've just seen from our IT department, we've developed a dashboard application, which taxpayers and property owners can go look and look at the sales that have taken place in their area, kind of compare that information to their property and their assessment. We've got frequently asked questions. We've got some good information, information about appeals. There's just a lot of detail out there that's available to the property owners.
So what's their last date that they can make an appeal based on this?
So our standard response is that the, from the date of the notice, we provide 30 days from that notice date to appeal informally. If they miss that opportunity and we can't address anything that they have concern-wise under that informal stage, then they can appeal to, directly to the Board of Equalization and Review. So they can either directly appeal to that board, or they can appeal a response from an informal review to that board. The board meets typically between April, and our plan is for May 8th to be the date of adjournment for the Board of E and R. So that's about the best day. The best way to appeal is to, as soon as the notice comes out. And if there's concerns at that time and it looks like a need to discuss it, that is our recommended time to get the best response from our office to address any concerns that a taxpayer has.
And when will these new taxes show up on the tax appraisal cards?
So our plan is to have the valuations out at the same time the notices go out, at the end of this week. So everything will be available. Those values will be available along, through the GIS application.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question too, David. For the most part, revaluation is real property, real property.
That's correct, yes, sir.
How is personal property affected by the revaluation of the real property?
The personal property valuation is not affected by the revaluation of real property. Our personal property, we appraise every year individually. So that, the personal property valuation has the potential to change every January 1st. We do a valuation of personal property every year.
Could you give an example of how personal property would be affected from year to year? What give away or takeaways?
So just in general, personal property is typically appraised using the cost approach. And what that means is we take the historical acquisition value of a piece of property, which you would have paid for it, and then we depreciate that based on depreciation scheduling guidelines that we use. So typically from year to year, personal property on a general basis will tend to decline based on the depreciation of that property value.
I think the last revaluation, I don't recall getting maybe one or two calls, but I think the one that I did get was after the property owner had received their tax bill at the end of the year. And does that happen a lot? My answer was, well, there's, you know, a time period. I think the response was, I've missed that, or does that happen a lot?
It does unfortunately. Once the point where the Board of Equalization and Review does adjourn for the purposes of hearing appeals, there is not a way to appeal those real estate values after that point. So when the bill comes out, it is too late to appeal at that time. So we do try to get as much information out there about this notice change, the new value that's out there, because this is the time to respond to that if you have questions or concerns. There is the capability every January, however, of making an appeal. So if it's a real estate value that has changed in this revaluation and you miss your opportunity to appeal this year, you can appeal next year even if we don't change the value. So every January, you have the opportunity to appeal that value.
So it's really important for us to make sure that folks know the importance of between the time they receive this notice and May the 7th. That's the critical time.
That's really the critical key time.
It is certainly easier for them.
It's easier for them. And it's that informal review period, when we have the opportunity to work directly with the taxpayer, it's just, that's the best opportunity to make adjustment because it gives us an opportunity to interact. We can come to some agreement. We can look at all the information the taxpayer has. A lot of times, they have information that we just haven't had in this process. So it's a great opportunity for us to get information from the taxpayers, from the property owners. And then once it goes to those more formal levels, it becomes a more formal kind of appeal. We try to resolve everything at the, sort of the informal stage. It's just the best opportunity to do that.
And what percentage of the properties would you say that you guys have actually visited? I would imagine not very many. A lot of it's come from information you gather otherwise. Is that correct?
Certainly, we've not visited every property within this revaluation period since our last revaluation. But we have had one of our appraisers visit every property in the county. So we have measured and sketched and listed every improvement in the county at one time or the other. It may have been a little while since we've been there last, but we have been on-site. We have measured the property, and we do have the details of what construction is taking place. And throughout, from year to year, if there are changes that are made, we're certainly on-site and reviewing those changes. And then when we do these neighborhood reviews, as we use our technology and tools, we have aerial imagery and pictometry imagery, which is an ortho imagery with multiple sides of the property. So we do those reviews and we identify a need to visit more properties. So we do go out anytime we need to verify what's there. We will visit, we're certainly willing during this informal review and appeal process to visit a property. If you get, a property owner gets their notice and thinks that there's something on-site that we need to take a look at, that's a very easy request for us to come out and take a look at the property. We'll send an appraiser out and just kind of verify what we have, the information we have.
Do you get many people that think their property's undervalued?
Occasionally.
Occasionally.
If they're ready to sell.
Right, right, right. That makes sense, yeah.
That certainly does happen. Our goal is to get the evaluation correct, so as close to 100% as possible.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, just one quick, and you said it, but just clarification and for the viewing audience and obviously for everybody that's here. You gave an example, house sells for 200,000. Your tax value's 199,000. So somebody that comes to Cabarrus County from somewhere else, and he goes to the tax office on a piece of property that he or she's found, and they look at it and they see the tax value, could they pretty much guesstimate that's going to be fairly close to what the property's worth? Are you looking at 100%? What if it'd been the other way? What if it'd been, you know, tax value's 199,000, but the property sold for 250,000?
Right. So our goal in this project is to be at 100% of market value, but that is as of the effective date of the revaluation. So that's a January 1st, 2020 date. So the issue with your question is it depends on when they look at it and when they ask. Because the closer to January 1st of 2020, hopefully the more accurate we'll be. Unfortunately, real estate markets change over time. So the further away from that effective date you get, the less reliable to an actual market value you may be if there's a lot of appreciation or depreciation in the market. So that, that's the key to answering that question, is determining when you're looking at it. Hopefully, as of January 1st of 2020, it should be reflective of market value.
So I think that's a good time to point out that we are on a four-year revaluation cycle. And I think that there are some other communities close to us that do it every eight years. So there is a huge swing between those revaluations. I think this keeps us a little bit more closer to accurate and true.
True.
Okay, any other questions for David? All right, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to discussion items for action. We're happy to have Deon Atkins Tate from Salisbury Rowan Community Action Agency for a presentation of their application for funding. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Today, I am going to present to you the community, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to present to you the Community Services Block Grant application for year 2020, 2021. So to give you a little background information about community action agencies, we were passed into Congress back in 1964 under the Economic Opportunity Act. So we are deemed as America's network for the war on poverty. So the Community Services Block Grant is funded under the Economic Opportunity. And we have operations in state-administered networks within local agencies. So the Community Services Network consists of more than 1,000 agencies nationwide. And we deliver services to low-income communities within 99% of all the nation's counties. So community representation and accountability are all hallmarks of the CSBG Network, where agencies are governed by a tripartite board. So the board's structure consists of elected public officials or their representatives, representatives of the low-income community, and appointed leaders from our private sector. And because the Community Service Block Grant funds are the central management and core activities of these agencies, CSBG Networks are able to mobilize additional services to combat poverty, such as Head Start, Early Head Start, which our agency has been administering since 1965 in Rowan County, and we also serve Davidson County as well. So the program funding year 2020, 2021 will have an allocation of 559,388. So that allocation amount is determined by the United States Census Bureau, which, with the 2017 Small Area Income Poverty Estimates. So Cabarrus County's impoverishment count was estimated at 22,816. I mean, I'm sorry, 16 persons. So the funding allocation for Cabarrus County, there's a split. Rowan County received 48%, and Cabarrus County received 52% of the funding in the amount of 292,689, um, 292, excuse me, 292,689. So the Self-Sufficiency Program is funded by the Community Services Block Grant, and that is the program that we administer the Community Services Block Grant funding through. It's designed to serve income-eligible individuals and families in both Rowan and Cabarrus County and who are motivated to obtain employment or better employment with the goal of becoming self-sufficient. So our supportive services include employment assistance, job training, entrepreneurship support, budgeting and financial literacy, professional development, and case management services through the Family Development Specialist. So our projected outcomes for 2020, 2021 is to serve 140 families. We want to move 20 of those families out of poverty. 20 are targeted to obtain employment, 10 better employment, 7 jobs with medical benefits, 20 are targeted to complete education and job training, 5 are targeted to secure housing, 20 will be provided emergency assistance, 30 employment supports, and 30 with education supports. So when we talk about the employment supports, those can be anything from different types of resume assistance, any type of services that would include maybe purchasing equipment, uniforms, things of that for employment. And then our education supports consist of us providing services around pay for tuition for any types of certifications. So we put anything from truck driving school to CNA training. So in 2019, 2018, 2019, our community impact was as follows. We had 37 employment gains, 22 educational gains, 11 housing gains, 39 employment supports were provided, 51 education supports were provided, and 40 emergency assistance supports were provided. And then we have our story of achievement. This is one of our participants who just recently graduated from our program. His name is Rashid Hassan, and he was enrolled into our program facing several different barriers to employment after an extended period, and a lot of it was due to his background. So we were able to help him obtain employment. He worked with his family development specialist who helped him to develop an individualized goal plan around employment and career goals. We looked at his interests and helped him do an assessment around that as well. He was immediately referred to a janitorial employment position, which he was hired full-time. And during his transition into employment, he was met with, he met with financial advisors who gave him that type of support. We do partner with a lot of our banking partners to provide those services. He was also provided financial support to help him to maintain his housing while he was, you know, trying to maintain employment as well. In addition to that, he was also enrolled into our National Fatherhood Initiative program. And he graduated from that program as well as completed prerequisites to attend commercial driving school. Anyone, excuse me, anyone interested in applying for our program, they are welcome to come to our main office, which is located in Salisbury. That's in Rowan County at 1300 West Bank Street. And then here in Cabarrus County, we're located at 325 McGill Avenue, Suite 507. Or they can visit our website at www.srcaa.com. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
I do, I always have questions. I'm still, even after five years, I'm in a learning mode. How much of this 500,000, Cabarrus County's 292,000?
That's correct.
How much of that is where the rubber hits the road?
Well...
What percentage?
We are supposed to provide at least 10% of those funds for client services. This year, we provided 19% of the total funding allocation. 107,500 will go into client services. The rest of the funding, and because this isn't a block grant, we have to make sure that those funds also go to operational expenses. So we have to provide salaries and things of that nature, space costs. We have to pay all of that out of there. But we try to make sure that a bulk of those services go into client services, and then we leverage other funds as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You mentioned Head Start, I think, at the beginning. What... Head Start is not funded from these funds, but your agency?
Yes.
Expand on that just a little bit. And you don't do that in Cabarrus County, only in Rowan, right?
Only in Rowan and Davidson County. We've been providing Head Start and Early Head Start services since 1965. So, Salisbury Rowan Community Action Agency was enacted in 1964. So, we are amongst North Carolina's original community action agencies. So, we were able to secure those funds for Head Start and Early Head Start in Rowan County only. So, we've only serviced Rowan in our past years, Rowan, Davidson, Moore, Montgomery, and Stanley County.
Right. Okay. And if I remember correctly, this board has no impact on this funding. That's just one of the requirements of applying, is that you come here and report, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Right.
You also mentioned the census. Some of the funding was based on the census numbers?
All of it is.
So, that's coming up and very important to point out, that people need to make sure they're counted.
Yes, most definitely.
Just point that out.
Yes. Because our funding, if you all remember last year, is about $200,000 more. So, we are significantly lower going into this next fiscal year. So, we definitely rely on the census information to secure our funding, to make sure, you know, our counties receive the funding that they need for these anti-poverty supports and initiatives.
Great.
I have a question, and this is somewhat irrelevant to what we're talking about, but is there a reason why it's called Salisbury Rowan and not Rowan Cabarrus?
It's a good question. We haven't quite answered it.
You know what?
I'm not the first person that asks.
You're not.
Okay, I didn't think so.
And you probably won't be the last until we get everything rebranded. And our board is definitely working on that. Originally, we started off in Rowan County. They changed the name back in 2000... No, 1997, from Salisbury Rowan Community Service Council to Salisbury Rowan Community Action Agency. And that's only because it changed on a federal level from service council to community action agencies. But we definitely need to rebrand because we don't just service Rowan County. I'm not sure why, in the initial stages, our governing board decided to do that, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you. And thanks for being here and sharing your information.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We move now to Londa Strong from Active Living in Parks Youth Athletic School Facility
Perry scared to get over here.
Yeah, I noticed he went over to the side.
Good afternoon. Just as a little background, I'm sure most of you all know and are probably tired of hearing, in reference to the youth athletic program and the use of the schools and the things that we've been working on over the last several years to get to the point as to where we are, we were, became January 1st of this year, and that is, our department is technically not doing anything with the youth athletic programs, with the volunteer programs, volunteer athletic programs, other than being a facilitator for the schools so that school use can continue. And that is because the agreement that the Board of Education has with the Board of Commissioners is through us and not with each of the volunteer athletic associations or the municipalities. And we've been dealing with the schools over the last several years, and that's where we are at this point. I'll just leave it at that. Mr. Downs may want to comment on that, but I'll just leave it at that at this point. So, what we did was, you may remember and may not remember, we had a cosponsorship agreement that we always, the department always, had signed with each of the volunteer athletic associations, and that included the municipalities that played in the program as well. Since we technically don't have anything to do other than facilitate, provide a facility, we reduced that 30-something page... Am I right?
39 to 40.
30... Yeah. Page document to a two-page document, which you should have. And we just want to... We took this to the Park Commission last month. Commissioner Hsieh was there. There was some discussion as to many of the things on there. There were no issues at that time, but there was one thing that came up afterwards when Perry sent this out to all of the associations. The curfew time for the 12 and under, is that correct? 12 and under, or under 12 age group, we had technically, we had it 8:30, which had been, over the years, that agreement that I was talking about. Many changes had been made to accommodate growth, more facilities, fewer facilities, whatever it might be. And 8:30 had been working, but the growth of the program and the use in the schools is such that 8:30 is very much a problem. And we do have a couple of association folks here that, if you all will allow, that I would like to ask them if they would come and tell us their issues, if that's okay with you. I think we have Doug Rambo and Connie Sawyer. Is that correct?
Hello. Good evening. I'm Doug Rambo. I'm actually the president of Odell Rec Association. So, we're pretty much on the west side of the county, over behind Cox Mill Elementary School. One of the things that we've been seeing, like specifically right now with our basketball program, we added, just this particular basketball season, over almost 180 kids into that program. Several for our cases. Mallard Creek had some issues on that side, and the housing population on our side of the county has grown significantly. That's completely impacted a lot of our schedules and things that we've had to do. So, typically, our kids got about an hour of practice time for basketball, and that was splitting the gym into two, making sure that we had the appropriate, like two teams going at the same time during that hour period. We had to cut back to 45 minutes now, due to the sizes and the number of gyms and things that we have. That pushes us into a later time period. There's things like wrestling, cheerleading, color guard, other athletics and things the school programs are holding, that impacts those gyms from being able to be available to us until a later period of time, in some cases. Other things outside of just the basketball program, and we start looking at the other sports. In our particular case, we don't have that many baseball fields, and our baseball numbers continue to keep growing. We continue to keep offering more challenging programs and things of that nature, and so the numbers continue to grow. If we don't go later, we'll have to start turning kids away from being able to play and participate in the youth athletics, and that's the last thing we would like to do. It's been my mission of really making sure every kid has an opportunity to play a sport. And that's why we've kind of come to you guys today, and Connie speak. I don't know where she is, but...
The increase in basketball this year went from 213 teams in the county to 289. So, countywide, and Doug was talking about the number of kids he had, but countywide, we were up 75-plus teams, and you put 10 kids on a team, that's 750 kids more, and that's 75 more practices, but there's no additional practice times.
So, when we sent the new agreement out, I got information back... I thought I had my note here. Oh, yeah. From Odell, Mount Pleasant, and Concord immediately. And Mount Pleasant was here earlier, but they had... Dennis and Durlin Brown both came in. We gave them permission to leave. They had other things to do. So, we would relay their information, and all of them had the exact same comments. It's like, please make it 9:30 instead of 8:30 for 12 and under, because we just don't have the time to get our kids in there. And like Doug was saying, there's so many other things that are going on in the gymnasiums. It's not just basketball. There's... He only hit part of the things that are in there.
I know. There's a lot of other things on here, too. I was just trying to keep it short and sweet. I mean, the premise will still be the younger kids always go first, right? I mean, I don't want a five- and six-year-old at a practice at 9:30 at night, right? Like, that's... They're not going to make it. So, it's, again, just pushing those nine-10s back a little bit more into the 9:30 timeframe, just to be able to allocate the growth of the community.
How long a season are you talking about?
So, it varies on sports. So, like basketball practices start in December, and the season runs through the middle of March. Baseball, soccer, softball starts right after, right in the middle of March, and will run through early June. So, it's about three or four months, give or take.
When you mentioned the soccer stuff, that's outside, or you're using the gyms inside for that?
That's outside. So, that's definitely outside.
And you had the same issue with the fields as well?
Yes, we do. Yeah. I mean, our soccer numbers, outside some of the other programs in the county, we've really kept growing. We've changed a lot around with the program, really trying to... It's 100% about the kids, and really trying to grow that. And that's what we're there for. We volunteer the time to make sure that they've got the best fields and best opportunity to continue to grow. I hated to see us cut back to 45 minutes for basketball. I mean, anybody that's coached basketball and understand it, that's not enough time. And, I mean, a minimum an hour, at least, but we're kind of limited of where we are, again, with capacity of gyms and just not having enough places to play, nor, you know, and then, the time constraints.
If it's extended to 9:30, do you still keep the 45-minute deals, or are you able to go to an hour at that point?
I'd love to go to an hour if I can. That's a great...
Does that afford you that opportunity, I guess?
It does. I mean, when we start looking at that, I mean, that would give, like, two more teams an opportunity to practice, so, which would add about 10 more practices, so that could spread out the time. Capacity of gyms is another bigger problem that we've always had, as well as baseball fields. Our soccer fields, we've been able to manipulate those, and turning a bigger field into multiple fields and can leverage that. But we've only got three baseball fields in our location. I know there's talks on additional fields and things coming to the west side of the county. It just won't be probably soon enough.
One thing Doug did not mention was the basketball teams. I know he said he was practicing two teams at a time. They have gone four at a time, going the short way. And you put 40 kids on a basketball court, it becomes a safety issue as well. His balls are running, you know, across courts and to other courts, and it becomes a safety issue as well.
And as you hear all of the numbers that, just for the Odell Association, and they're not alone. Everybody has done the same thing. Mount Pleasant and Midland have both grown this past year, if I think I'm speaking correctly, Perry.
Correct.
Yes. It's everywhere that the growth is, and that's one of the reasons that we have tried to, or we have stepped back in our role, because we weren't growing to keep up with it. So, we thought if they could do it better by themselves without us causing problems in the middle. And that kind of, it's kind of where it put us as a middleman between the associations and the schools. And that's why we have this two-page agreement instead of our 39-page agreement, that basically is just who they are and what sport it is, and we'll have a contact person. So, hopefully, the school principal will be able to contact whoever is in charge when there's an issue, instead of them calling Perry like they've done all of these years. So...
Yeah, a lot of these... This will cover the new turf fields as well, right?
Everything that we work with, yes.
And as long as they're entering into this agreement, there's no cost to any of these leagues to use these facilities.
That is correct. That is correct. Anybody that is not part of a cosponsored program through our department has to pay for use of the facilities.
If Odell was not a cosponsored association, they would pay close to $70,000 a year just in field rentals, and that would drive your cost of registration up to what?
We wouldn't have a league.
I guess the only concern that I would have would be if parents had concerns about kids being tied up that late, and if that were the case, you basically have the same effect. Other... You're going to have to cut... You have to limit participation, and they have the ability to self-regulate if anyone's concerned about that, I would assume.
I mean, we try our best to try to, you know, make sure, again, it's about the kids. And I know if a parent has a concern... I mean, there's some parents that have concerns about a 7 o'clock practice for a nine-year-old. You know, I mean, I get it. I mean, everybody has their own thing set up. We really try to work with the families just to make sure that we can try to be as accommodating. As long as you're not trying to do it just to stack a team, that's... It irks me, sorry.
Yeah, that would never happen.
So, are you asking us to give you the open-ended... Because currently, it says age is 12 and under. So, you asking us to just say 9:30?
On the 12 and under.
13 and up can still go to 10 o'clock.
Okay. But it's going to say 12 and under to 9:30?
Correct.
Even though we all know five- and six-year-olds are not going to go to 9:30? Would it not be better to have specific language that says we're not going to... I mean, I just feel like the public reads this or looks at it and thinks, well, God, they're not even paying attention to what they're doing. They just open-ended said, hey, everybody, it's okay to go to 9:30. So, we all know there aren't going to be five- and six-year-olds going to 9:30. So, can we not put that in the language? It just...
We can...
Yeah.
Whatever you would prefer.
I mean, I just... I want to make sure I'm... Because, so, 7 and 8...
7 and 8.
There's a chance...
7 and 8, 9, 10 would have the opportunity then to go to 9:30.
9:30.
With 5, 6 still staying current.
Because we know they're not. There's not a...
Correct.
Well, I'm making broad generalization. There are very few parents of a five- or six-year-old that would have them in a gym until 9:30. I guess there's probably one out there somewhere, but very few, I would think. So...
Agreed.
I think there'd be more than you would realize.
Well, I coached, so, yes, you're right. I'm probably not remembering correctly. So, I just feel like it would look a little... It would be a little more that we're paying attention to what we're doing if we've got the language that's a little more specific to what we're actually going to do.
Yeah, we can make those changes. That's not a problem.
And so, I guess the options that are available to us, we could pull this... I'm assuming this is on our consent agenda for our regular meeting. We could pull it off consent, and then, you could give us a revised version of this at our regular meeting, and we could approve it that way. Would that be the best way to approach that?
Londa, do you feel the need to take that back to your part?
No, I think they're...
That's a pretty easy thing.
Does that sound agreeable to the majority of the board to have it that way?
Yeah.
Okay. When we approve our regular agenda, we will pull this off consent and move it to our new business, and then, we can take a look at the amended form and act on it at our regular meeting.
We can do that.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
One other thing I'll tell you is that the city of Concord, which participates in the programs, because it's all countywide, actually has paid for facilities to use this year during basketball, because they had so limited... They've really increased in their numbers, but limited use of the school facilities that are in the city limits of Concord, which we try to keep it by district. They've paid for, I think it was two gyms that they've been paying for, so they'll have enough places to practice. So, that's where we are.
Right.
And I know we have more schools coming on, but we still have the same problems at those schools. There's more...
Kids.
More demand.
More kids and more demand for those facilities.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We move now to appointments to boards and committees, and you all have that complete list in front of you, which I think you probably received earlier by email as well. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns on those appointments? They look pretty routine to me. Okay. Then, we will move to item 4.4, Resolution Amending the Board of Commissioners 2020 Meeting Schedule. On that one, we've had some discussion. We had originally amended our schedule to move our work session and our regular meeting forward a week, each of those. And I probably should say the exact dates of those. Because we thought that a majority of the board would be gone to a conference in DC, we later determined that that was not going to be the case. And so, this was a suggestion to move it back to the regular time. In doing that, we discovered that some of the commissioners have already made arrangements to, for other appointments on those weeks. So, the impression that I get is the desire is to leave these amended dates as they are, without changing them, and those dates are... I think we did this back in December, so there's been a little bit changing. So, that means if we do not take up this action tonight, that we will be March the 9th and the 23rd? the 9th and the 23rd. So that we can choose to remove this, this resolution from our regular meeting agenda and leave those dates on the 9th and 23rd if that is agreeable to the board. I see heads nodding yes, so we will proceed in that way. Okay, next is item 4.5, request from the town of Mount Pleasant for a sewer easement. And I think Jonathan will talk with us about that.
There is a general map as well as a document included in your agenda item. The town of Mount Pleasant is requesting a 20-foot sewer easement on county-owned property at Mount Pleasant High School and Mount Pleasant Middle School. You'll see from the easement document that's attached, it says Board of Education, we've received, they didn't realize the county owned the property rather than the Board of Education. They have sent us a corrected document that'll be included in your regular agenda. The Board of Education did consider this and reacted favorably to this. If you recall, Mount Pleasant High School was served actually by an onsite treatment plant originally by installing a pump station on Highway 49 back in 2008, 2009, they were able to run a gravity sewer line to serve that school and it now serves the middle school. The town of Mount Pleasant participated in the construction of that pump station at about $600,000. The total project was about $2.9 million. WASAC covered the rest of that since this is, it actually serves a couple different jurisdictions, but, so this is an easement that then allows them to extend the sewer line north to some properties on 73 that they've annexed. At the time that that pump station was, was put in Mount Pleasant, part of their contribution, from what I understand, was from owners of those properties. This was, I guess, foreseen at the time that that was built to, it was sized and constructed so that they could serve some adjacent properties in this area with public sewer. And that's what the intent of this is.
Okay, questions for Jonathan?
Just want to make sure everybody understood, they did, they have requested it with no charge.
That's correct.
So if you approve it as requested, you will be transferring the property to them if you prefer to, if you prefer to add a fee to that or a sales price than you took in what they've asked for. As Mr. Marshall says, they did contribute to the work on the pump station way back with, but just wanted to make that clear, you understood that they are requesting it to just transfer the title without a fee.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Do we have some kind of procedure that we, that this has been done in the past?
Well, we have done with further schools and the schools, but I'm trying to think if there's any with the towns. It's legal to do that, I mean, they're a nonprofit or a public agency, so you do have that opportunity if you so choose. But I do not recollect if, over the years, if we've charged any of the other adjacent cities or towns.
I don't recall with easements, I mean, if we're selling right away to NC DOT, we have in fact gotten a fair market value for that and then that's benefited those particular schools, but I don't recall any with sewer easements. Now, we had a recent sewer easement that was for a private development and they did pay, actually had an appraisal done to determine fair market value and paid based on that. So when it is a private group, then we are be both legally required and we have as a practice had them pay for that, but I don't know that we have with municipalities.
I'm not recommending one way or the other, I just want to make sure you understand that if you go as requested, it's just a straight transfer for the easement.
I would say my opinion is we are all in this together, so I don't have a problem with transferring it in that way. Yes, ma'am?
Is this, the town of Mount Pleasant is developing the property, is not housing that's going in there?
It is housing going and as I understand it, these are, it is extending it to provide service to private property. One of the parcels has, has had historically mobile homes on it, so it'd be housing replacing those mobile homes. I'm not aware of what the development on the other parcel is, but it is, it would be residential development as I understand it and on private property.
That's, that's correct, yes.
And who paid the money? Did these developers pay the money? The $600,000 you're mentioning? Did the town of Mount Pleasant pay the $600,000 or did the developers then have the property, go ahead and pay it in advance with the hopes that they would be able to tie into it at some point?
It came in the ordinance, the capital ordinance passed by WASAC, it shows coming from Mount Pleasant, but based on some correspondence from the mayor at that time, Troy Barnhart, there was private developers contributed to that money for Mount Pleasant. We can get more detail on that if you would like.
I'd like to, if we're opening it up for private development, it'd be nice to get as much detail as is available for it. The land that it's going over, not all of that isn't school or county property, is it?
That's right.
So not going through some private property? And what are those landowners, are they intending to be able to hook onto the sewer lines also? Is somebody going to charge a tab fee that's going to go to somebody else? I mean, there are all those things that I think we need to have that information.
Okay. And I did request that someone from Mount Pleasant be at the meeting tonight, unfortunately they're not here, but, but again, this is an item you may want to place on your new business and we could make that same request that they come before you at your regular meeting.
Okay, additional questions on that one? I'll make a note that when we approve our agenda, we can discuss that. Other questions for Jonathan? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to item 4.6. We're happy to have Chief Bailey from the Sheriff's Office here to talk about inter-local agreement between Rowan and Cabarrus Counties.
Good evening, Commissioners. I hate to bring these timely issues before you, but last week we got a call from Rowan County Sheriff. The jail inspector was at his facility, they ordered him to remove 30 of his inmates or they would close him down. So we have agreed to take 15 of those inmates since we do have the capacity and the space to hold those inmates. So the request is to suspend the rules and accept the contract, and they are charging us a base rate, it's the same rate the state currently reimburses us for inmates.
They're paying us a base.
They are paying us, yes.
Paying us, not charging us.
Yes, they are paying us to hold those inmates, yes.
Right, any questions?
Maybe it's just my rookieness still. Who is the jail inspector? Does he work for the state of North Carolina?
He does work for the state, yes. He can, he can order the jail to be shut down and those inmates, all inmates be dispersed from the facility. Currently, most jails in our facility are overcrowded. They don't, they lack the bed space in most instances and they're trying to shuffle these inmates out to various counties. We have been fortunate through the well-planning of the commissioners in the past to have sufficient jail space to hold not only the, currently the ones that we have assigned to Cabarrus County, but those from other jurisdictions and turn that into a, just basically, we were asked back years ago, prior to building the annex, we were asking those same counties to help us. And we in turn just try to do that as a way to facilitate their needs as well as it does generate income. We are holding these inmates at a cost and we're charging those, those counties for those inmates. And we are currently under our staff capacity right now, so we do have the ability to house them without any inconvenience or added expense to the county.
Okay, any other questions?
Chief, we're still doing from Union County now, is that right?
We have gotten rid of our Union County inmates. If you'll recall, the last time I was here was for Beaufort County. We are still holding Beaufort County inmates, approximately 10 of those, those inmates.
And if my memory serves me correct, the revenue stream that comes from these other counties for us housing their inmates, we've got that money set aside in like a pool that we're going to use to renovate?
Absolutely.
So it helps us in that way?
That's right. County management has allowed us to take some of those funds, turn them in, back into some infrastructure projects that we have. As you, as you well know, the housing unit now is 10 years old, so there's painting, there's some other minor aesthetics that we can do and take care of using those funds. So what we're doing basically is generating funds and not putting that on the burden of the taxpayer, because those, those facilities are already there and we have the capacity, we have the staffing to do it. So again, this is at minimal cost to the county and we're able to turn those funds into some capital improvement projects that we've had, kind of sitting on the sideline waiting to get some funding. So we are, we're actually already in the process of doing some of that work now.
Okay, other questions? Okay, if there are none, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Do I hear a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between Cabarrus County and Rowan County for the housing of Rowan County inmates?
One more.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now back to tax administration, advertisement of 2019 delinquent taxes, and David Thrift is back with us.
So according to General Statute 105-369 requires that I report to you the amount of unpaid taxes for the current fiscal year that are liens on real property. So for 2019, real property taxes that remain unpaid as of January 29th, we have $8,279,281.75. We subtract from those accounts the accounts that are currently under bankruptcy protection, which is $54,155,070. So the total lien on real property as of the 29th was $8,225,126.05. The statute also requires that upon receipt of this report, the board must order the tax collector to advertise those tax liens. I would request that an advertisement date of March 22nd be set. It's the reason we wait until March 22nd from this point is to give us an opportunity to send another notice to those taxpayers. They'll have until a week before that advertisement date to pay those taxes to prevent being advertised in the newspaper. So it's another opportunity to get the information out there and try to collect those balances before we have to advertise those, those property owners. So the requested action then is a motion to approve the report for the 2019 outstanding tax balances that are lien on real property and to order the tax administrator to advertise these liens in the Independent Tribune on March 22nd, 2020.
Questions for David? What, yeah, I know that prior to advertising this, a lot of those get paid and then even more afterwards. What, for the previous year, what was the final collection rate? It's pretty high if I recall correctly.
It was very good, we were 99.3%.
99.3, that's pretty good.
Which is, it's our first time in, to my knowledge, breaking into the 99 percentile, which is an excellent accomplishment for our staff, our collection staff does a great job.
Definitely so.
And we are currently on pace to kind of maintain that, we've had a good year so far for, for this current collection season. And these numbers are fairly similar at this point in the game, but we've seen a lot of improvements, so we think at the point when we advertise, we'll actually have less properties being advertised than we have in prior years.
That's good.
We're hopeful for that case.
I would imagine those pages and pages of advertisements are not an inexpensive proposition either.
They're not, but they're actually borne by those taxpayers, so they're, we take those fees that it costs to advertise those and we apply those to those delinquent accounts. So that's typically in the past been about $1.25, $1.50. Based on the number of advertisements we're projecting, we're thinking that's going to be changed to about a dollar this year. So that is an example of the decrease in the amount of advertising we're doing, which is good. But then as those accounts are collected, those fees are provided back to that, so it's not a completely a cost to the county, we do put that.
And now that we're providing those services for all the municipalities, that covers everybody in one advertisement, right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Another advantage.
Yeah, so this is total due on the real estate right now, that's great.
Okay, any questions for David? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to the approval of our regular meeting agenda, and we have talked about a couple changes. If I interpreted correctly, we were looking at moving F1 to be G3. And that was the Active Living and Parks School Facility Use Agreement, which they're going to bring back a revision. And then moving F9 to be G4, to get additional information as well on that. Are there any other?
Take a nap.
Okay, and then we were going to remove F8, delete. Okay, anything else? Okay, do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda with the above-mentioned corrections?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and economic development as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 and 4.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into closed session, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes and we are now in closed session. Thank you all for joining us on television tonight, and we will see you at our regular meeting in two weeks. Thank you.